Hey, Don, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Hi, folks. I see people are starting to come online. We do have one person on the phone with a 360. Can you identify yourself?
I think that's the police chief.
Okay.
Yeah, that's Chief Martin.
Okay, Kevin, I was gonna tell you, star six should mute and unmute you if you don't do it, if you are not able to do it just with your phone.
Yeah, I'm muted on my, I'll mute on my phone.
Leah and Chloe, just as we're getting started, just let you guys know, we do have the facilitators' agenda in the shared drive if you guys want to look at it, and we have you both test on there with note-taking. Leah, we did put you on there specifically for flip-charting, too.
You know, Bobby will not be joining us. He's not feeling well, or I mean, she's got stuck going on.
Okay, we'll give it one more minute here, then we can start with a roll call. Okay, well, we are at 5 o'clock, so welcome to the third work session in our series of 2020 Strategic Planning Effort for Oak Ridge City Council. Just to remind you guys, we are recording and we're live on Facebook, so super fun. And I'll hand it over to Brian for roll call, and then we can go back to talking about agenda and other stuff.
Okay, roll call. Counselor Whitney is excused. Counselor Hollins? I don't see her on the participant list. We'll look for her as we go on here. Counselor Kenyon?
I saw her earlier.
She's on the list. Counselor McClellan?
Here.
Mayor Holston?
Here.
Counselor Forkham?
Here.
Counselor Kenyon, are you there?
I see your screen. Sorry, hello. Citizens stopped by. I had to rush back in the house. Sorry about that.
And Counselor Hollins? Still don't see her on the list. We'll hope she comes in.
Okay. Maybe I will introduce the facilitation team then. I'm Sarah Ultimus Pope with Southern Limit Force Collaborative, and we have Katie Fields assisting us, as well as Chloe Simmons, an intern for the Oak Ridge City Council. And Leah, Leah, can you say your name for me the right way? I don't want to box it here.
It's Barsakini.
Barsakini. Leah is with the Southern Limit Force Collaborative, also a University of Oregon intern. And then I do see that we have Grace on. Grace, do you want to introduce yourself if you can?
Hello. My name is Grace Capelots, and I'm a new, rare participant. I'll be working with the city of Oak Ridge and for the Oak Ridge Air Program, so it's great to see you all, and I look forward to meeting you and working together.
Thought that might be Grace's first chance to meet you all. And then Chief Martin's on the phone.
Okay.
And I think that's everybody I see. Am I missing? Oh, Brian, it looks like you have someone with you?
It's a citizen, Lauren Hood.
Okay. Oh, sorry, one more. I see also Trudy Hammond, also a citizen, has joined us. Okay, I'm gonna go through a little bit of our agenda for today and just some reminder stuff for Zoom meetings. So, welcome, and thank you for being here with us over dinner. If you have to eat dinner, no problem, just please mute. We have the agenda in the chat box. If you can see, it's a pretty simple agenda, but we'll be covering a lot of business. I want to just remind people, just Zoom etiquette, please keep your sound off unless you're talking. We prefer that you keep your video on because it's more engaging for the rest of us, if we can see your faces. Do you have pen and paper handy? We also did send home some homework, or send by email some homework for counselors, so you might want to have that handy for you. And it seemed to work out fairly well when we did the hand-raising before, so I think we'll try and do that again for, to manage discussion. And we just asked that during sessions, that you turn off your cellphones and other devices. And Katie was sharing the PowerPoint here. There we go. So, agenda today. So, we're gonna do a survey presentation from the community survey that went out from the initial goals and objectives that council worked on for the first two work sessions, and then we're gonna just discuss survey results and incorporation and prioritization. And then we want to show you a tool that we've been working on, a scorecard for keeping track of the goals and progress towards those goals, and then talk about next steps. And ground rules, we did, we visited these the last two work sessions, so they're still the same. They should be familiar, but we just asked that everyone who participates today remember these ground rules that we've all agreed to. And before we get started, I just wanted to give a moment for either Brian or Kathy. If you guys have any opening comments or anything you'd like to say before we launch into the work session.
I'll see my time to the mayor.
Oh, Kathy, you're not coming through.
Okay, there I am. I think the only thing I wanted to bring up is, given the events of the last few weeks with the fires, I hope that we can also perhaps include a little bit of a conversation that may result in some changes in, a change in priority, or an addition to some of the language there about Firewise, as well as Oak Ridge Air, and making those two things strategic goals, or incorporating them into something we already have on there, so that Oak Ridge as a community and as a council specifically states that they are working toward that. So anyway, that's just all I wanted to mention.
Okay, I definitely think we'll have time to work that into our survey discussion and just general discussion after that.
Okay.
Yeah. Stuff, we've definitely learned a lot about what's possible in Washington, Oregon in the last month.
Haven't we?
I think that's all I have for just kind of housekeeping before we get started. Just a reminder, we only have a couple hours, so we will keep you guys on task as much as we can, so we can get through everything on the agenda. So there will be some work that'll be remaining after this, and we'll talk about that as we get towards the end of the meeting. But an opportunity for counselors to maybe form a subcommittee if needed, if you feel it's necessary to work on the scorecard a little bit more. So I think I'll hand it over to Katie to talk about overall themes and surveys and results. Does that sound good, Katie?
Sounds great. Thank you, everyone. So I also just wanted to, as a reminder, let everybody know that Leah will be taking kind of marking lot notes for any items that kind of fall more under tasks than under goals as our discussion progresses today. And so we'll make sure that those are captured, and we can find ways to fit those into other parts beyond the goals and objectives portion. So, the survey went out in August, and it went out both online and in paper format. And we had 166 total responses. And compared to some other surveys that have gone out in a similar fashion in the city of Oak Ridge, that's a pretty good response rate. Usually, we have anything over 100, it's considered good, so 166 is definitely pretty good. Of those responses, 133 were paper responses, and 33 were online responses. And so, as we discussed in our previous meetings in July, we kind of grouped the goals into internal and external theme areas, with the internal theme areas being those things that are fully within the scope of the city's budget and the city's authority, and then external goals that are more reliant on working with partners, both for funding and for execution of the goals. And so those then had two goals underneath each of them. And what we saw from the responses that we got, and, oh, and also just as a reminder for those surveys, there was a month for people to respond, so we had the full month of August up until September 4th for people to be able to submit their responses. So what we found from those responses is that the overall survey rankings were pretty close, within a range of 3.6 to 4.5. And the top three goal areas, so that included both of the internal theme areas, as well as the strong economy section, were within a hundredth of a point of each other. The goals related more to community livability were a little bit lower ranked, and again, that was on a scale of 1 to 5, with 1 being the lowest and 5 being highest priority. So what we're seeing is that the community as a whole said, yes, these goals are all important goals, and then those top three goal areas were all very close, high-ranked goals. So this is the breakdown, just as categories, of what those goals look like. So what we found from some of the comments was that even though community livability fell a little bit below the other theme areas in terms of rankings, there are a lot of comments that reiterated that certain areas that fell underneath community livability were really important to the community, including a lot of ideas around beautification and making sure that the city is looking clean. And there were also a number of comments about Highway 58 related to a variety of areas related to storefronts, the road itself, and areas around the Highway 58 corridor. There were a number of comments addressing public safety, especially focused on speeding and concerns about drugs. The public commented a fair amount about concerns about job creation, and then again, city beautification, especially where that relates to code enforcement and opportunities to help make sure that the city is beautified. Cost of utilities was another area that came up in some of the general comments. And then there are also a number of suggestions that we think will be helpful for informing the more specific tasks that will be part of the eventual strategic plan report. So now we'll get into the individual categories, and so you can see here the actual current wording of the goals, along with their score. We've also included information about how many of the survey responses left particular questions blank. And so this kind of fell out a range between about 7 to about 15 responses left blank, and that varied based on goal. And then you can see kind of where that falls on the graph down at the bottom. So, within the goals related to safe community, some of the major topics that emerged in the comments were concerns about road safety, both on Highway 58 and on other roadways, as well as drug enforcement, and suggestions about some mental health resources in the community. And so now, I'll have a couple of minutes if people would like to have any short, brief questions or comments about the safe community goals.
If you can raise your hand, that'd be great.
Oh, yeah, again, if you have, if you have a question or a comment, go ahead and raise your hand under the participants menu.
All right.
You've got one from Counselor Kenyon.
Go ahead.
So, I'm sorry, but my question isn't about this, but rather, I wanted to find out, how did we get the surveys out to people?
So they were distributed on, in the water bills, and then also online. And Brian, could you speak to where they were distributed online?
It was announced via Facebook and on the city website about the availability of the surveys within City Hall, or could direct them to the online version.
And then those online versions were in a Google Forms format? And then we did take the handwritten surveys, and we uploaded those onto the Google Forms as well. We still have the hand ones. And I would like to add here, I think we had, what, 160-ish surveys, right, Katie?
166 total, and 33 were online, 133 paper.
In past Oak Ridge experience, and just working with other agencies, for a survey of this type, getting over 3% is a good turnout. So this was a fairly good turnout.
I only asked because I didn't get one.
Should we shift to the next theme area?
Yeah, let's just double-check here. No thought, general thoughts or questions about these results?
Okay. Am I muted?
You're on.
Oh, good. How about that? So, as we're going through this, you know, so this is one of those ones that, are we gonna just go back to our worksheets later and talk about?
Okay, so after, after we go through the results of the survey, we'll have about, we'll have about 20 minutes to discuss kind of those rewordings, and then 15 minutes to talk a little bit more about kind of the bigger ideas, if we need to add or change any of the goals.
Okay, okay. That makes sense to me. All right, thank you.
Yeah. All right, any other thoughts before we move on? I'll just reiterate, like Katie said, when she was saying about some of the comments, we definitely saw that there's these goals around safety, but we saw safety comments come up in every section of the survey. All right, so we'll move on next to the, sorry, my screen is off now. Goes to responsive government. So in the responsive government category, we had a few more of the responses left blank, as you can see in that parenthetical notation for each, and I'll just give you a second to read through those, to look at the rankings.
Katie, explain to me what you just said.
So, the, where there's the parenthetical notation, where it says 13 left blank, for example, under number one. So that's, we got all of these responses back, but some people left certain questions blank, and so we just did a tally of how many were left blank.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and so you can see that the first two goals were ranked a little bit lower than some of the others, but the managed finances in a fiscally responsible manner, ensuring long-term financial stability, ranked the highest out of all of the goals across all of the different theme areas. I just wanted to make a note of that.
Right.
The written comments for this section focused a little bit more on wording of the goals, and so those came up in the worksheet that we provided for you all last week. And then also, there were some questions and concerns related to, again, transparency, which has definitely come across and is relevant to especially that goal number one, with transparency and clarity about prioritization of how the city is conducting business.
So can I ask a question about just surveys in general, as far as wording? So, so number three, you know, obviously rose to the top of everything you said. So, managed finances in a fiscally responsible manner to ensure long-term financial stability. So, is that? Was there also a question that, I mean, what, to me, when I read this question, and I may be totally off-base, and please tell me if I am, this is saying that it leads one to believe that, that you believe we're not fiscally responsible, and that's why we don't have long-term financial stability. I don't think that's what the question meant, but how do you, how do you translate that? Do you see that that way, or is it, because I would have said, ensure long-time financial stability, or how important is long-term financial stability? This one kind of leaves open the door to, well, we don't have this because we haven't been fiscally responsible. So, does it have a flavor of both, or am I just reading more into it than I should?
Yeah, Kathy, I think maybe it would have been helpful to see how the survey was written. We asked, we told people the theme areas, then under each theme area, said, these are the goals that the councils come up with for this, for the strategic plan. Please rank on a scale of 0 to 5, how important this goal is to you. So, so I don't think it had a connotation that this isn't done, it was just, this is our goal for, right now for this council, this is one of their goals. Do you agree this is an important goal?
Okay, thank you.
And actually, probably Leah or Chloe, if you guys, I think in our shared drive, there should be a PDF of our handout. If you guys could drop it in the chats, turn it on to make it shareable and drop it in the chat, so the council can see that written version. Yeah, because if you didn't have a water bill, you wouldn't have seen the written version necessarily, with so many things being closed because of COVID, so.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't, I don't ever look too much in the water bill anyway, but since I knew this was out there, I went and found it. But, okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions? All right, let's go ahead and move into the goals related to strong economy. So, and again, we're shifting here from more of the internally-controlled goals into the ones that are going to be more reliant on external partnerships. And the written comments for the strong economy section showed a pretty strong division in the community between pro tourism and de-emphasizing tourism in economic goals. So that definitely was the most apparent theme that came out in the written comments. And other topic areas that came up among the comments were city beautification efforts, and making sure that the city doesn't take on too many tasks that are outside of its purview and responsibilities. All right, and happy to field any questions and comments about this as well. Okay, well, let's move on to the final category, which is community livability. And again, this was where we had the lowest rankings from the community, but a lot of comments that referred back to things that were related to community livability and vitality goals. So, some of the comments that we found beyond the suggestions about beautification were a lot of specific recommendations about types of recreational venues and other types of businesses that might be helpful to improving community vitality and livability. Any questions, comments on this section? Seeing a couple of things in chat, let me double-check on those. I see a comment from Dawn saying that we need access to see the document. Leah, can you double-check on that?
Thank you.
Okay, any general thoughts about any of the survey outcomes, or kind of those theme areas for comments that have come across so far, before we get into some of the rewording tasks from the worksheet?
I do.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I just, you know, I recognize that this was, as you read through the survey responses, and get into the raw responses, and it's really obvious, this is really hard to categorize and tally, and say, well, this is for this, this is for this, this is for this, because so much of it overlaps itself. So, thank you for doing what you've done, and trying to pull this part, data apart as much as you, as you possibly can. I just want to acknowledge that this is not an easy task, so thank you.
Thank you. We will include the survey results in the final report as well. Not the individual comments, just kind of those general themes across the survey, cross-cutting themes we'll add in there. But, but it is helpful to just even see the rankings and how the community was giving feedback. I do think, I feel like the takeaway is, with how high the scores came out and how close they are, that these are all really important priorities, and it is hard to differentiate, because a lot of them are overlapping, so. And then, you know, some of it, too, could be our wording in some stuff, because like, some of, like, we have the goal in there around the beautification, I think, making the business corridors and neighborhoods safe and beautiful places to work. So that is a goal, but I don't think it resonated with some of the survey takers as a goal like that, because they'd still would add on, we need, you know, we need to beautify Highway 58. You know, because they weren't seeing that specific, you know, street called out. It still didn't resonate, but.
Right.
But that's helpful to get that feedback through those surveys.
Right.
Sarah, this is the CA. I have one sort of observation. I think it's important to note that division between the tourism aspect, I think it's, you know, it really goes to probably maybe some of the demographics here in town, I don't know, but it's something council probably needs to think about as they, as they look at goals for that area.
I agree with you, Brian. Go ahead.
Going back to some of the specific comments that we had related to those tourism perspectives, there seemed to be some specific types of concerns people had related to those. Some were kind of about beautification and how tourism impacts beautification efforts in the city. There are also some concerns specific to being in this COVID-19 situation, and concerns about external visitors coming into the community. And then there were a couple of other topics that came up, so it kind of spanned a range of reasons why people were concerned about prioritizing tourism. And so hopefully, we'll be able to capture a little bit more nuance there in the tasks that fall underneath the goal.
All right, any other final comments, questions? All right, well, let's go ahead and go on to some of the, oh, looks, we have one more comment in the chat. Let me double-check on that. Okay, looks like it's the link to the form. Okay, so the reason why we sent the worksheet out last week with just the four particular rewording sections that we had is because those were ones that had multiple comments about particular suggestions, and we didn't see that feedback on many of the other goals. So that's why we had those four to have you all think about ahead of time in terms of rewording. So the first one's probably the simplest and most straightforward, the suggestion that we had was to add the word equitable into this goal to provide efficient, sustainable services for public safety. And again, this one fell under the safe community category. So, all ended up to feedback on adding that word into the goal.
Okay, hold on. Yeah, okay, so when I looked at that, am I on? I never know.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm on, okay.
We can hear you.
I switched to my Word document, so then I lost the screen. I can't. Okay, so, providing efficient, sustainable services for public safety, and I agree that it's certainly definite, that is something that, you know, is in the, in our vernacular right now. So I had just added, provide sustainable, efficient, and equitable public safety for our community, is how I had reworded it, myself.
Thank you, Kathy. That's from any of the other counselors?
Hi.
Looks, there's a comment from Chrissy in the chat box also. Oh, connectivity issues, Chrissy, okay. Thank you, Chrissy. Dawn, go ahead.
Yeah, so, to clarify, do you want us to use our little blue raise-your-hand thing, or just do this, or? I'm not clear.
Either way will work, and I was gonna add, I'm not seeing hands, but Brian, I don't know if you made me a co-host or not, but if, Brian, if you want to call out hands that you see that works, too.
Okay.
Sarah, you should be able to click on participants and be able to see hands raised from there. Oh, there we go. Okay.
So, I just wanted to add on that, yes, I do like the idea of adding the word equitable to that statement. And then I also wondered whether or not we should add the words police, fire, and EMS. I know that public safety means that, but someone in the comments had said to be more specific, so I wondered if, if that's what they wanted.
I think that the comment to be more specific- I think that the comment to be more specific had been on a different goal area. Let me double check.
Oh, but I agree with you Dawn, I totally agree with you. Because I, as I read it, each time I had to remind myself, am I talking about public safety policing? Am I talking about public safety fire? And you're right, we use public safety both for the overarching and sometimes we use public safety things like just for police. Because we talk about fire and EMS. So I would not disagree with being a little more precise as Dawn suggested.
This is, we're taking notes here with the word smithing. So would we add the word equitable in like Kathy recommended? So provide sustainable, equitable and efficient public safety services and then list them out?
Chrissy.
Sorry Chrissy, we're not getting you, it's really cut up.
Chrissy, you're also showing is muted.
Yeah, I'm not getting her, is everyone else getting her pretty cut up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I definitely agree with you both as well.
Can somebody text her and let her know she's just not coming through?
Sure, she, she hit on the chat too, so you might check the chat.
Oh, she did say she agreed to the comment, okay.
Yeah.
So is what I've written here capturing sufficiently what, what we're talking about here?
I don't know.
Yeah, you might put public safety in there though too.
Okay. All right. Are we ready to move on to the next one?
Think you need to move, you need to move services down after fire.
Okay, thank you.
I was gonna say, that's a very awkward reading.
It is very, I agree.
All right, provide efficient, sustainable and equitable police EMS and fire services for public safety. And maybe we just reorder fire and EMS, I think people are just used to saying it that way. That might help a little bit. You know, actually, we're gonna need to spell EMS, we shouldn't have an acronym in there, so. Emergency medical services.
Can I make a suggestion? Is it possible to use, and I would love council's input on this, but is it possible to just go ahead and use public safety? And then in parentheses, define that public safety is fire, EMS and police. Because, I mean, and, or maybe we need to decide how we're using the term public safety so that it's consistent throughout this. Because I think there is that kind of, what, what are we talking about when we use that? Excuse me.
Don, I couldn't hear you, sorry, he can hear you now.
Um, I like the way that it's written here. However, I would like to point out that in some ways people consider public works also public safety for like, you know, streets and curves and driveways and sidewalks, you know, being safe to, to transport on. So how would we be able to include that?
It could also be addressed in objectives, there is improved street safety. Wait, I have one. Yes, there is street, improved street safety as one of the objectives under there, expand transportation services, but that'd be another way to. Would this be more inclusive to put it as provide efficient, sustainable and equitable public safety services, including police, fire and emergency medical services? So that's not necessarily exclusive of anything else, but making sure those are called out?
That sounds good actually Katie.
Yeah, I like that.
All right, any, any final thoughts on this one? Yeah, let's move on for ten seconds. Okay. So next we had provide facilities and infrastructure that support current and future needs. And this one fell under the responsive government category. The suggestion that we got from the public was to make the goal more specific. And so if you all have some ideas on that, I will make some edits.
I switched again, I don't know whether I'm on or not, I'm on.
I can hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna start out and, and I apologize to council because this is a, this is kind of a lot. And I, okay, so I agree, provide facilities and infrastructure that support current and future needs is really kind of a blah goal. I mean, it's not blah, I just think it's way too broad and it really doesn't mean anything. So looking back on past strategic goals and looking to see what facilities and infrastructure are and that type of thing. I narrowed it down to a few, but I know I, I know, and I know in no way do I hit everything that would be covered with facilities and covered with infrastructure. You know, because it can mean so many different things. Facilities to me mean buildings, but infrastructure to me talks about the roads and the, and the water pipes and the sewer and the, you know, communication networks and that type of thing. And then there's this future needs idea. So I wrote down a few things and one of those things I included was identi, was really specific. Identify and secure funding for a public safety building to adequately house public safety. Now, here again is that question, for me, public safety, I'm thinking police, so that, that would have to be morphed or changed or whatever. I also identified something that we have previously identified in the last probably 15 years repeatedly as far as a location and funding for a community event center that provides a focal point for recreation and events for the community and also generates income from recreation and event rentals. So that is more specific to me than just provide facilities and infrastructure. That may not be at all where anyone else's head went, and I totally understand that. And as far as future needs, um, my biggest, my future need would be conduct a feasibility study for a small conference oriented hotel for Oak Ridge. Those are goals to me that are, that are five year strategic goals as opposed to just, of course, we're going to provide facilities and infrastructure that's always in our mind, so I will unmute, I will mute myself and love to hear what you have to say.
Dawn, go ahead.
Um, so a couple of things that came to my mind as far as expanding that out a little bit was the, uh, completing the water project and updating our sewer system, because those are infrastructure type needs and, um, getting some street repaired then.
And I was gonna remind folks of what the objectives were under that goal. On the survey, we just did not have room in two sheets to put the objectives. So the objectives that you had in there were water and wastewater improvements, street repairs, develop affordable, accessible fiber optic infrastructure across the entire community, explore CMAC funding options and develop council approved capital investment priority list. I just wanted you to know that's captured there already, doesn't mean that we, you don't need to drill down more specifically into this goal or add other objectives.
So Sarah, are you saying that that, those, that wording is already in our goal?
It's in your objectives underneath the school, so.
It's in the objectives under the goal, okay.
Want to do to the objectives you want to achieve to move towards progress and achieving that goal.
Okay, so given that that, those objectives are under the goal, which I think is, is good. And thank you for reminding me that that is there. Does that then make it more specific? Was, was the goal on the sheet when they did the survey?
Yeah, so the survey just included these high level goals, it didn't have some down, yeah, we just couldn't.
Okay, okay, so I can see why, why the community would say that's really general, not, you know, what do you mean by that? Whereas, you know, Dawn's comments fleshed that out some more. Mine's may have like gone over the top of the hill, but that's okay. Okay, I, I'm.
So, I think that the question now becomes, is it all right to leave the goal as is with the understanding that these things are captured under objectives? Or do we want to drill down the language a little bit more on the goal?
I guess that depends on what is it gonna look like in its final form? If those, those objectives are included under the goal, I totally appreciate that and think that's good. Because it does then specify to a greater degree what we're talking about. And then my question would be, which is rude to answer your question with a question. My question would be, do, does council think we should be more specific? When we're talking about the, the five year goals here of, of council and what we want to accomplish in the next, you know, five years or however.
I do see that John has his hand raised.
I, I think personally, I think the goal is fine as long as we're focusing on the objectives to accomplish that goal. Like those objectives spell it out. That's why when you sent this, this and whatnot, and I looked at it, I, I totally remembered that it was all about, and to me, my mind went straight to, you know, the water systems, the, the street repairs and, and those things that we had spelled out down below and saw personally, nothing wrong with the, the broadness of the original goal. Because the, the details were spelled out in the objectives that we would be doing to achieve that goal.
And we will be getting into a tool later on in today's discussion that will capture how tracking will happen for the goals and objectives as well as tasks that then fall underneath these objectives. So it will be getting to higher and higher levels of specificity. And so Sarah will be going through that, that'll, and they'll also have the full report. So we'll have a lot of opportunity to include a higher level of detail for each of these goals.
But going back to the mayor's question, when she asked, asked the question, so when, when we're all said and done, I envision we're going to have the goal and all the sub objectives. So that when we're trying to determine if something we're working on is meeting an objective to the goal, that we would be aware of that so that we are working on the things that, the objectives to accomplish the goals that we set forth. In, in my understanding, all that correctly?
Yeah, absolutely. And, but we did want to give you guys the chance, like maybe you were thinking of something more specific around this wording to, to make it, you know, more specific. But if, if council feels like, I mean, I think it's good to have this discussion. If council feels like it's okay to have that really high level goal because there is a host of specific objectives that you need to achieve under it, then I think that's okay. And it'll all be in that final report and then the tool will help, help you got, you know, the council determined where to invest in priorities moving forward. But right now you do have five objectives under that one goal area, plus it seems like a few more have just come up in this discussion. In the interest of time, as council, all right, with moving on to the next topic? All right, thank you. All right, this was under strong economy. The suggestion was to make something more specific about the use of the word atmosphere within the goal. Improve the city's economy by creating an atmosphere that is open to business.
Katie, did you want to do number two? Modernize the city document?
Oh, it looks like I accidentally got the order wrong on these, so let's go ahead and do that. Absolutely, let's modernize or define what modernizing means. So again, this was within the responsive government category. Modernize city guiding documents, policies and procedures. And we had a number of comments asking for clarification on the word modernize. Donna, is your hand raised?
Sorry, my mute, my key spacebar does not mute me all the time or unmute me. So I thought maybe instead of the word modernize, we would just write review and update city guiding documents, policies and procedures.
All right, any other initial suggestions or would we like to take a look at what Donna suggested?
So, did you put that on there already?
Yes, so it's this one now that says review and update. The second line.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
John?
I, I think that's good as well if we're, you know, have objections to the modernization term, then that spells out that in a more specific way, I guess.
All right. The one thing I will add here, that the reason I think the modernization word came up is because there were some objectives around upgrading certain tools that your departments use. But I'm trying to find it, so I think I might have left it out of.
You know, and I will, while you're looking for that, I mean, I will say that this is a very broad objective and covers a lot of things when I think in actuality, council very much wants to be specific in as far as the charter itself. And, you know, as opposed to other documents which obviously need to be done too and, and we're working on it. And it makes me wonder if maybe the goal, there shouldn't be just a goal spelled out about, you know, revising the city charter to eliminate and clarify language that is archaic or unclear. Because that has been a repeated request from the community. It's been a repeated request from administration, it's been a repeated request, request from council recognizing as we, as we fall into little pit traps in the, in the charter that aren't clear or vague or are archaic. I personally would like to call out that this is a goal, a specific goal, not just in general with the other documents. But, but I could be in both ways. I just don't want to make things so general that no matter what we say we're doing, we're following our goals.
Yeah, and Kathy, you know what, I was wrong, that got moved to another area. So really the only objective you have under that modernizing, the guiding documents goal right now is measure and evaluate performance and progress. So yeah, there might be an opportunity to be a little more specific there.
Okay.
Do you want to propose some language? I think we have one language proposal, did you have another one there Kathy?
Yeah, revise the city charter to eliminate or clarify language that is archaic or unclear. And then I have an objective under that, if that's helpful.
Yeah, go ahead and say it and we'll have Leah capture it.
And I can put it in the chat too. Recognizing that our charter contains such language that is archaic or unclear that has caused confusion. The city council will establish a charter revision committee to identify and suggest revisions in the charter for council approval and consideration to the citizens at a general election.
Anywhere in there, did you include a committee with citizens changing those?
City council will establish a charter revision committee. I didn't, I, I intend that to be a citizens committee, so I could throw the word, that word in there too, would that help? Because a charter revision committee will include, and there's lots of examples of it, but it should include a lot of, you know, citizen input, citizen participation and minimal current council. Hold on, I'm trying to get to the chat, I'm not very good at it, okay. So I put in that language in the chat. What would you stick in there Dawn, a city? A charter revision committee? A charter revision committee? How would we alter the name of that? I'm open to whatever you think is clear.
I like what it says right now, "Citizens Committee to Revise the Charter." It needs to say "the charter."
Okay. Okay, good. Good, okay.
Not seeing any other hands right now, but maybe what I am seeing is that Dawn's language, "review and update city guiding documents, policies, and procedures," I like that's real clear, plain language, and that might be the appropriate goal. And then this objective underneath it, around the city charter, could get you towards that goal. Because that, that won't be a five-year, well hopefully that won't be a five-year.
No, 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 no. No, that's, yeah. No, I like that too. Thank you for, for clarifying that.
Is that looking good to folks?
So, to be clear, are we going to be going through these again later and adding more objectives, or are you wanting us to hit them now?
So we're capturing the objectives largely as parking lot items, and so we're working to make sure that the goal orange is in place, and then capturing any suggestions for objectives. But we won't be going through all of the objectives today, just because we don't have sufficient time to be able to do that.
Okay.
We will have opportunities to have potentially a working group, or other ways to contribute as we're developing the more detailed report that goes along with this. Alright, so we have one last free wording to get to. So again, this one was under the Strong Economy section, and the goal is "improve the city's economy by creating an atmosphere that is open to business," and we had a request to provide some clarification about the word "atmosphere." Alarm off. I see Dawn's hand. Hi Dawn.
My suggestion for that was to have it say "improve city's economy by reviewing and updating ordinances to be business-friendly."
Alright, any other initial suggestions, or shall we talk about Dawn's suggestion?
I like that, but I think that is, it is a little narrower than I would like to see it. I, I hate to get into the habit of doing goals and then, and then sub-goals, because there's, yeah, improve the cities, because the goal is to improve the city's economy, and one of those will be by reviewing and updating ordinances to be business-friendly. And another one of them, you know, would be to engage council, probably, at least in my view, engage council in actively promoting new business. But that's the, you know, so all, there's a lot of little pieces to improving the city's economy, and I, and I, if, if council feels that that statement that you just changed is, isn't, doesn't box us in, because there is more, more than just reviewing, I'm okay with it. I, I just don't want it to be too narrow.
Maybe I could add here, it's helpful to the conversation, the existing objectives under that goal are, the objective similar to the goal says, "provide an atmosphere that is open and welcoming to businesses and economic growth," and the other objective is "improve the city's economy by focusing on ways to increase and support new businesses." And granted, you know, some of these objectives, these were, this was a lot of hard work and long meetings you guys were, so I think some of these were kind of, in some sense, placeholders for Smith later, but those were.
Yeah. And, and I guess when you're in the midst of talking about this, we all kind of understand what the word "atmosphere" means, because we had, did have those, those conversations that included all those other things. So I don't, I actually kind of don't see that we need to change the word "atmosphere," but if we can come up with another word that helps explain a little bit better, then I'm okay with that. I don't want to get too crazy with detail.
Would the word "attitude" be the proper swap-out? I don't know if that's too harsh of a word, but create an attitude that's open to business?
I think that might be too harsh.
Yeah, I don't think "attitude" is the right word. I, I like "atmosphere," and, and the unfortunate thing was, is that the citizens didn't get to see all the objectives underneath that helped clarify what the, the actual goal is, and so, you know, I, I really don't see personally a need to change "atmosphere," given the objectives that are underneath it that are more clarifying, then it, it gives a whole different context to it, when they have the whole picture, and unfortunately, they only had a snippet of the picture.
I, I would be happy with keeping the word "atmosphere" in there too, knowing that we've clarified it, and there'll be more underneath it.
Me too. The atmosphere is actually pretty huge. There's a lot of stuff under it.
I think so too.
Okay, good. I think that's good discussion to have then, and you guys understand collectively why you picked that goal, and it still is obviously something that people recognize is important with the scores that were given to it. You know, we weren't seeing low scores on it, so.
Okay.
Sounds like we've got some, some general consensus around that. So, we just wanted to take just a few minutes, it looks like we don't have quite as much as we had anticipated, but to kind of have general open discussion about any other goals, as you were reviewing the materials and the outcomes from the homework last week. Were there any goals that you thought maybe needed to be added, modified, or cut? So open that up for discussion.
Well, I, I don't want to just, okay, so I, you know, necessarily when we started this out, I really think that we should somehow incorporate one of our, our goals being around the Oak Ridge Air program that we have all this money for, and are, are going to push hard to help our community with this, with the smoke and their health, as far as, you know, air filters and that thing. And then also the FireWise, I think they go hand in hand, and that, that by making it a strategic goal of our, of our community, of, of council to support and advocate in all ways possible, these two programs, I, I just think it's important that we acknowledge that and put that in there, to, to not say anything about it. I think is kind of callous at this point. So, what I wrote out was to prioritize, a goal would be to prioritize participation and facilitate the programs of Oak Ridge Air and FireWise, to protect the health and safety of the citizens of Oak Ridge and the Hazel Dell District from the effects of unhealthy air and catastrophic wildfire.
So would it be helpful here, Kathy, I can screen share what we had before, and you can see those objectives, and then see if you want to add a new one in that theme area?
Okay, is it, well, yeah, you think that would be messier than just looking at it and saying, where does, where does it fit? Or, because I'd like council to decide if, if they even want to go in that direction.
Well then, maybe I should just remind you here, that you did have an objective to become a model community for emergency preparedness, wildfire, and smoke risk reduction. And then under that, then one of the measurable tasks was work with state, local, and federal partners to implement Oak Ridge Air program.
Okay, so we did call out specifically Oak Ridge Air. I would love to add FireWise to that, but Sarah, I, I need, you know, as I was thinking about the FireWise, I was trying to remember, can, can we become a FireWise community, or is it only residents that become FireWise?
Yeah, the entire community, yep, but it needs to be a partnership-led effort with the community, because you need people to volunteer. So you have to have, is one hour for every home in that community, volunteer work every year. So there's definitely some work behind that.
Okay. Okay, well, I'd like to hear council's opinion as to, thank you for reading that, that goal out, because that does kind of incorporate it, and with the addition of FireWise, I would be, be fine with that.
And it is only objective, but it is nested under that goal, so.
Right. Oh, so it's nested under a goal? So I'm feeling strong enough to where I'd want it to be a goal, because I think it's just so important to our community, to actually say that that is a goal of the council, not it falls under something else that we'll get to.
So I'm going to screen share, so you can see this. Is that coming across okay?
Yeah, I see it.
And so right here, it's down here in this, this objective number three, and it could get pulled out as its own goal under that safe community, if you guys desire. Go ahead, Dawn.
But wouldn't that fall under like public safety, or something to that effect?
I, I think it kind of falls into a lot of areas, because, because of the breadth of, of the Oak Ridge Air program, it falls under public safety, but it also, you know, falls, falls into helping homes become healthy, providing air filters in the medical area. So it's, and that's public safety, I, I agree. I, I'm just feeling very, very strongly that, that this should be something that is called out in our goals, that it isn't a secondary thought.
As a CA, I just want, just one observation would be, you know, objectives are going to be measured against, and goals, you know, it'll be progress toward a goal, but objectives actually will be physically measured, so it will allow for visibility on a regular basis, if it's left as an objective.
I also wanted to point out that I'm not sure, while I understand why you feel strongly, and I do too, feel strongly about getting our community safer as far as fire hazards are concerned, or, or whatnot, but I'm reluctant to use, to call out FireWise as a goal or objective, only because just what Sarah just mentioned, that every, every citizen would need to commit to an hour of volunteer activity to become a FireWise community, which to me makes it sound like it might be hard to actually attain that status. Maybe it's easier, and I don't understand it all, but if we just worded it a little more vaguely, like, you know, ensuring that we have a program established to help protect against wildfire, or something, you know, a little vaguer than specifically calling out that program.
Let me clarify, Dawn, I think it'd help, I, I just, I didn't want you guys to be misled to just, to think that you as council can say we're a FireWise community. It's more effort than that, but it's not every individual, it's just the number of structures. So I think we have around 1,200 homes in Oak Ridge proper, so you'd have to have 1,200 hours of volunteer time, but that can be public meetings, such as this one, talking about FireWise, so every person that attends would be worth an hour. It could be people self, people self-certifying, that they spent 20 hours mowing their lawn over the year, it'd be 20 hours. So it could be a joint effort in getting those hours, but you'd really still need to have a concerted effort of collecting, getting people to, to certify that it's doing those hours, and then providing opportunities for the public meetings, where people can get the education on how to FireWise their homes. So I think if, if the goal is around fire safety, it's definitely a good, or the objective, but if that's the thought around fire safety, then saying FireWise is a really good shortcut to get you there, and it is achievable, but it's just not as simple as the city council passing ordinance that say they want to be FireWise.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure our goals are able to be achieved, and so I was worried about the language. But I'll, I'll go with what everyone else wants.
Yeah, I think this being fire safety, how would we word that? Fire safety caution, or fire cautious safety into that?
And, and, and it does, I mean, I agree, the model community for emergency preparedness, wildfire, smoke, and risk reduction, as well as you called out Oak Ridge Air in there as an objective, which is a measurable task, and the Oak Ridge Emergency Response Plan, I think that all works together. I guess maybe I'm just, it's sitting on the top of my head right now, and, and I want to make sure that, that we are keeping that in the, in the forefront. And, and Brian, I appreciate what you say, you know, as a, as a objective, it becomes a measurable task, as opposed to an overarching goal, which might, might dilute it a little bit. So, okay, now that I've had you all talk about it, and I appreciate all your thoughts. I'm willing to step back and say, let's leave it as it is.
Well, and, okay, I'm kind of wearing two hats here, but let me wear my collaborative hat for a second. If you put FireWise in there as one of your measurable tasks, it's a very, it's a good goal as a city council to partner and help that happen, because once you become FireWise, then you'll have an easier time applying for certain grant funding that will help get more of that work done. So it's definitely worth going after that title of being a FireWise community proper, because that you'll have an easier time of doing it with additional funds, instead of just relying on, on your city budget.
And, and I appreciate you saying that, because that was in, in my head too, is the conversations that we had had is, once we begin doing that, then we have more money that is potentially available to us to help citizens and help the community achieve those goals, which, you know, the goal isn't, isn't to achieve the written goal and become the community. The, the goal is to prevent our community from burning down, because we have so much fuel sitting around on the ground and in the trees.
And just a little more context for council, ODF did submit for the Upper Willamette area, so it would be mostly Oak Ridge, Westphal broader area, to get a $400,000 grant last year to do fuels reduction, and the feedback they got is, well, they're not a FireWise community.
Right.
So there's big dollars available, but that is kind of a bit of a barrier.
Right. So, you know, if, if council doesn't object to adding the words "FireWise," I would like to add the word "FireWise" to the objective, not necessarily the goal. Just as we've called out Oak Ridge Air, I would like to somehow add FireWise into that.
We could probably put it as objective, but the goal, yeah, that would be up to probably the council and the citizens, if we really want to go further with it.
Looks like John also has his hand raised.
Well, what I was gonna say is, wouldn't that become a measurable task under objective number three, would be the measurable task of becoming a FireWise community?
Yes.
And, and again, that leaves it down into a spot where it's measurable to how we're monitoring how we're doing towards that, as opposed to getting it up higher, where we're not actually monitoring that individual part of it that is so important.
No, I agree with you, John, and that's what I'm saying, is do we want to put the words "FireWise" into, into any of the objective, or do we just leave that out, knowing that that is something we can go after, and not specify that it is FireWise, the program itself that we're going after?
And I, I'm suggesting that we put it down as a measurable task for achieving objective number three.
Well, I see what you're saying. Got it. Okay. That sounds good. I could, let's throw it in there.
I think that makes sense, and we can capture that in the notes, and when you guys look at the scorecard, see it there, and, and a lot of that scorecard work is going to fall on Brian to really help us shape how that.
Okay.
So.
Got it.
Were there any other thoughts on any additions or changes to the goals based on reviewing over the last week? Alright, let's go ahead and move on, and Sarah will be next talking about some ideas around prioritization.
Do we need a quick five-minute break before we start into prioritization?
Sure.
Let's do just quick five, and come back at six, 10-ish, maybe 11, but. Does that sound good? Okay, as we're getting back online, just going on our agenda. Going to pull up this other computer, just so I can see what you guys are seeing as I screen share. So this next, uh, 40 minutes or so, we're going to spend some time talking just about, um, prioritization in general and where, uh, what, where you want to see the city focus its, um, limited resources, both time and money. I think I got everything turned off on that screen. Okay, so sometimes it's helpful to see the whole picture before you start into the discussion. So that's one of the things we talk about when we're setting up the agendas. Like how much do we show them before we have discussion? And what's helpful and what's just too much information? So we were going to talk about scorecard last, but I almost feel like after that last discussion, it might be helpful for you guys to get a preview of the scorecard to know what that encompasses and then, uh, circle back and talk about prioritizing or where, like the direction you want to give, um, the city administrator in prioritizing whether working on the internal stuff that you, that, that you can, um, you know, it's in the purview of, of the city to manage with its budget. Or where you, whether you want to focus on these, um, opportunities around partnering with other organizations to achieve some of these other goals. Does that sound, does that make sense to you guys? Okay. Let me find my share. Screen share.
A lot of this is going to do with the financial part, right? How much money we have in our budget to do stuff, whether it's with partners or without.
Yeah, for sure. Um, I think that is the reality and it's just important for you guys to keep that in mind. All of these are very important goals, but whether or not there's enough time, people and money to achieve all of them is, is something you have to think about. So what really needs to rise to the top as, um, number one area that you need to deliver on? And what are other, I guess, how to look at it as what, what's the, um, needs to haves and what are the nice to haves? So here, I'm going to just kind of walk you through what the scorecard is. And for you to know, this is a tool that Brian will have and City Hall will have in measuring progress towards achieving your goals. And so whether or not it's something you see regularly at city council meetings, or if you just have quarterly check-ins where you view it. It will be a tool that can be managed in, in real time and, um, and help, uh, help the city leadership, um, know what are some of those objectives that you are working on, who needs to achieve those and, and in what timeline? So, uh, right now, um, all we've done is taken the, um, goals and the objectives and plug them into the scorecard. We haven't, um, gone through, sat down and gone through really, uh, figuring out each one of these and what the metrics are and how to measure those. So I think that's something that'll come, I know that's something that we'll spend some more time on later. Uh, after we've had this discussion tonight with you as council and also gotten feedback from council on where to prioritize. So the scorecard itself, you'll see at the top, um, it has, uh, so it has the, uh, there's a tab at the bottom for each, um, uh, theme area, safe community, responsive government, strong economy and community livability. Uh, we might still mess with the colors a little bit separating out the internal, um, uh, uh, goal areas versus the external partnering goal areas. But what we do have on here is the things that can, that are tracked for each goal are the, um, the goal itself. And as I scroll over here, as I scroll over here on the screen, you'll see that, uh, that there's the goal and the goal has under the objectives. And you know, you can measure your progress towards completing that goal as well as, um, track fixed costs and estimated, uh, man hours for each one of the goals. And then the objectives where you get down to the details. So I did, um, start to fill out this one. This is just my guessing, but the objective that you guys identified was to educate and involve community and efforts to improve community safety and reduce crime. And the task under that was to create a neighborhood watch program. And so I'm not sure if this is correct, but we put it in the lane of safety committee. The status is it's not yet, yet started yet, but the status can be adjusted to on hold, in progress or complete. Priority medium, this is just a simple high, medium, low, a start date, an end date, a metric. So this one, I don't know if this is the right metric I put in there. At least one active neighborhood watch group. Deliverable, you want to achieve 100% of that. And then here's a percentage towards done. And then just estimating this be 50 hours or 40 hours of, of, and this is something we haven't even determined yet. Is it just city, uh, staff time or does this also include, uh, volunteer time such as your own time, the city council or your committee's time? But that's kind of a, a little bit about how this tool works. So our theme areas has several goals. If you scroll down, here's goal number two. I think that was it for a safe community. Responsive government has three or four. Strong economy, um, three, and then community livability. So that's just the general about that. Um, any questions on that? Is that helpful seeing that?
Sarah, this is the CA, if I might. So just for councils, uh, just to let you know, and I, I've dealt with this in a previous life and it, it's helpful for me as a manager to, to be able to see all this in one spot. And, uh, be forced to review it in a periodic basis. But the real beauty of it, I think in the end is, is if you can, if you look at each objective and you look at, uh, a percent complete, you can translate that into almost a bubble chart on a fifth, uh, spreadsheet tab where you could actually in a, in a minute, see how the city's doing and, and each, you know, percent complete would be aligned with a red, yellow, green. Or even another orange if you wanted to, but red, yellow, green. So you would go to that one tab. And all those percentages complete would be tied to a bubble. And it would give you an instantaneous, a quick snapshot of where we are. And then if you wanted to drill down on any one particular one that was, why is it still red? Then you would just go to that spreadsheet that lives underneath it. So that's my thought.
Yeah, there's even some communities, granted much bigger communities, but they'll have a, what's called a dashboard. So a public facing webpage that shows kind of the progress that's being made on goals and how that's being achieved. We're a small community, so I don't know if we'll get that technological with it, but I think it is just a really helpful tool. And then also helpful for, uh, to, to be honest with yourself as a council and as a, as a city. Do you really have capacity to do everything that is, is on here? And how much can you balance at one time? What needs to go on hold? So something else can be, um, a high priority. Kathy, go ahead.
Um, so I, I just, you know, for me looking at this, I, I understand that, you know, it serves a dual role. I mean, I, I, I can see absolutely how important this will be for, for administration to be able to track what's going on and where you are on projects. But this is a really, a, a really important tool for, for council. And whether or not it is live for them as far as being able to go in and make changes, I don't see that happening. But to be able to go in and see it and look at it, it helps keep your perspective in what we're, our, our upcoming topics, our proposed agenda items. Even going in there and looking as a counselor and as a mayor as to, you know, well, you know, what more can we be doing in this area? And, and, um, and, uh, you know, provoking thought about, about how to make things, these things happen and not letting them slide to the the side. So this is really important. It's important for the dog, evidently too. Um, but it's really important, um, for council. And I see it as a, as a valuable tool for us to.
So one of the things that we were hoping to hear from you guys, and, and this is, you know, your process. So maybe this isn't what's helpful, but I, I feel like it would be helpful as, uh, as we work with Brian and go in, going into fleshing out the, all of these, um, spreadsheets on here. Is what really are your priority areas? And so we can look back to, um, maybe this is where we should, uh, clip to the slides. So maybe I'll do that, but we could look back to where, with a survey where, um, the community told you the priority areas are. So maybe I'll do that real quick. Are you, oh, good, you're seeing this now. But one thing that is, we did notice on survey results is that it's really tight. So the community told you that the theme areas of safe community and strong economy are equally important at a 4.09. And then slightly behind that is responsive government at 4.08. And then community livability a little bit further behind. So maybe those are, you know, kind of where your priorities lie too. But I did create a survey and, and decided we wouldn't have enough time to do it tonight, but, uh, asking you, maybe something you guys can do later, like what percentage of, of city resources? So both time and money, would you like to see put towards each one of these theme areas? So is it 25% equally across the board? Or is there one of these theme areas and those goals that are more important to deliver on, um, than others? And I think it's also important to keep in mind the, uh, the, the separation between, um, here's the rankings, between safe community responsive government, which are those, internal, uh, uh, theme areas that the city can control, where a strong economy and community livability are areas where the, the city can support and be part of finding solutions to, um, to some of those objectives and achieving some of those objectives, but can't necessarily just put city resources to it. So I don't know if that's a helpful frame up or not, but I wanted to give you guys opportunity to discuss and hear some of your, um, thoughts around prioritization in this way.
I think the, the safe community should, you know, should be one of our top priorities. There's a lot of objectives that fall under safe community, whether it's the EMS, the fire, the police. You know, our roads, you know, everything that just follow under being safety. That's, I think that should be our top priority is to save community all the way around.
Thanks, Paul. Are there other thoughts?
Yes. I'm trying to unmute myself.
He can hear you. Yep.
So, yeah, I, I, I agree with Paul, but I, I also can, this is going to be hard to just say, okay, we're going to put our resources all here or we're going to spread our resources there. Until we actually get going and start filling out that scorecard, I think. And going back and looking at your scorecard, where you have to put in percentages, that seems like that's very subjective. And so if, if you have more than one person inputting into it, 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 I mean, somebody might think something's 10% done and another one thinks it's 25% done. I mean, it's a, how are you, you going to? I mean, how does that score sheet balance that? Who, who actually, is the, the score sheet live with the city administrator and the city administrator then is the only one that's inputting the data into it? And then we just all get to look at it? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's how we envisioned it. Um, so Brian, put you on the spot here. That's how we envision that would be. Ultimately, it is your CA who's determining how, uh, city resources are used. But you as a council can give guidance on kind of what your priority areas are, but that was our thought is that Brian would ultimately be, um, the one who is filling out these columns and then adjusting them accordingly as, uh, progress is made. Brian, do you want to add anything there? Or am I totally off base?
No, you're on. Uh, what I will say though is that in the past, I've seen it work where, like I said, I would use this as a tool during meetings, like at department head meetings or whatever to get updates. And I would translate the information I get from those subject matter experts into, and make sure to be, you know, as objective as I could be, given, you know, the, the kind of the wide expanse. And then hopefully, it, since I'm the same one interpreted each time, it'll be, it'll become accurate and not different folks filling out the, the numbers each time.
And I see that as the benefit.
Right, right.
I mean, I see that as a useful tool, because then also that, that gives you the ability to go back and look and say, you know, like, I've heard you say this a time or two, is that really what we need to be working on right now? Is that what we need to be doing to achieve what we're trying to achieve? And then being able to show it to the council and say, hey, you're, this may be off track, or you're right on. I mean, a valuable tool.
And, and one other comment on the, when you talk about allocating resources, just understand that we have a lot of sunk costs, fixed costs, that really kind of predetermine how much, how much financial resources you're committing to each of these areas. And I'll tell you that, you know, like, safe community, financially, you've got a lot of money in the game under that one, and not so much in some of the others. So just keep that in mind as you think about prioritization of resources. Labor's another thing, you know, obviously what you work on is what's important, but it's, there is some sunk cost in the equation.
I saw Kathy has a hand up, unless that was an older one, and then Dawn. Not hearing you, Kathy.
Thank you. So, no, that was a new hand. But, so what I'm just going to remind, just reiterate for everyone, is yeah, this is a tool, and, and no, we don't have enough, you know, we know we don't have the resources to do all of this, but, you know, as with anything else we have, this is multitasking. This is for council to keep in mind of what our goals are. And I would point out also that while we may not have the money now to work towards something, or to accomplish something, what this also helps is council to focus on, what do I need to learn? What do I need to become informed about in order to help my community reach this goal? So for example, you know, we have, we have a lot of outside entities that can help us and educate us as individual counselors about the homeless issue, about affordable housing, about rural housing in our community, you know, about infrastructure. And it may be as we, as our council's role, and they do, that we, we recognize, begin to recognize the importance of participating in those outside entities, and then participating in meetings with them in order to keep our education up, so that when we do have the opportunity to do something, we're ahead of the game as far as knowing what the structure is, knowing about it. And then there's always a learning curve to all of this, and we won't ever know everything we need to, to know, obviously. But I hope this would also encourage council then to go, I need to learn more about this, and really push toward it, and then educate each other about it. Keeping these goals in mind and having a spreadsheet to be able to work at, look at, and go, okay, how are we progressing? Helps us also to recognize that the responsibility falls on our shoulders also to educate ourselves. So that's my two cents.
Thanks, Dawn. Did you still have a comment?
I was just thinking that you were asking what kind of percentage we wanted to put on different stuff, and I was thinking, maybe to start, we should just give you it up, 25, 25, 25, 25, because they're all so important. But then we probably need to have a more specific, after we, after we input all of our objectives and tasks, maybe a more detailed discussion where we go through together and talk about whether each one should be considered high, medium, low, or whatnot.
Yeah, it's, there's definitely a lot of work that can be done there. And one of our thoughts, and, you know, this is your process, but one of our thoughts is that we could basically have Brian take the initial crack at it, but maybe work with a small committee that could help him on that. Because it might not be everybody's interest in getting down in the weeds specifically on each one of these, but it might also be really helpful to him to have some help. And we, I did think about sending it out and having everyone just take a crack at it, but it is a lot of work, so I didn't know if that would be useful, but that might be an option. And we also didn't want to, I didn't want to just try and take a crack at it myself, figure this, you know, getting down in the nitty gritty around this, really doing the expertise of, of the staff to be able to help on it.
I, I think that that's a good idea, personally. Because I, when you look at this, some of these things, we've already been working on, and some we haven't. And until you actually sit down and start filling out that scorecard and that, you know, and, and looking at that, to be able to just say, okay, well, we're going to put this much to this goal and this much to that goal, to me, doesn't make any sense, because, you know, we may already be partial to, partially down the road on one, and, you know what I'm saying, and not even have started on another one, and, and stuff. So I, I don't know how we prioritize. I mean, other than what Dawn said, just give 25% to all, but that is probably going to change as soon as you start filling out the card and realize that we have the resources and whatnot to, to actually pursue this one, where we maybe don't have the resources to pursue that one. That's just my thought.
Well, this is really helpful feedback for us, as far as developing the plan and writing the plan, because, you know, we really don't know until we hear from you guys if there's just one area that's still going to, you know, be priority above all others, or if all of this stuff is really important. And I don't think we need to, in the actual report, say any one thing is a priority. Maybe you track that within your scorecard of where the priorities are and where you invest your time. But we wanted to have the opportunity to have a discussion and learn from you guys, if you really clearly wanted to be calling out any, any specific lane. But it kind of sounds like, maybe not so much, though, safe community, like Paul mentioned, is, is important. And, and like Brian reiterated, there's a lot of investment already in delivering on, on those goals.
Well, that and, and the fact that, oh, I just had a brain fart. That so many of them are intertwined in, in some way, even though we pulled them out and, and we stuck them in a category, you know, there, there's a lot of intertwining that goes on there behind the scenes that, that we just can't necessarily ignore, and it has an effect on, on each one as we're working on them.
Well, I think, does that, does that make sense to everyone, then, as far as the written report? We'll just incorporate everything that you have there, and then it'll be the scorecard where that really kind of falls out. And then the work remains to be with, with filling out that scorecard, which will be in Brian's purview. But there might be an opportunity to, I guess, around council roles, you guys would have to decide if it'd be another work session, and it's the whole council, or I don't know if you guys can do subcommittees? Can you do subcommittees, or how's that work?
Yeah, we can, we can do ad hoc committees of the council and assign, if we wanted just counselors to work on something, to bring to council to help us prioritize. Or more work session, either one.
Brian, do you have thoughts around that? I could see there being probably another two to three one-hour meetings to work on, on this, unless you were just to do all of it and then double check with everybody. But do you have thoughts on process?
Yeah, I think a, a small committee would be valuable, include a couple counselors, some of my staff that have some expertise in the area, in particular, you know, Eric and the police chief, because I know that safe community is high on the list. So I think a small commu, a small committee would be nice.
You know, and I think the option there is, I mean, we can do it two ways. We can have a council committee, or we can have a city administrator committee. The city administrator committee might be a little more flexible, because you could, you could ask certain people to assist you and advise you into how to prioritize and get their thoughts, as opposed to a city council committee, you know, of, I mean, like John, you and I and Dawn worked on the city evaluation process, the administrator evaluation process, which would be only council. So however we want to do it.
I, I think an administrator committee would be valuable, just because of the flexibility and the ability to pull in people.
Yeah, I agree with Brian, and then he'll probably bring it back in front of the council anyway. So that's probably the best way to have an administration committee.
Okay. Okay, great. I think that then we kind of know what our next steps are. I don't think we need to belabor it. It'll be just about getting that set up, and then we, as the facilitator team, can start drafting that report in the meantime. So that's kind of happening alongside, so you'll see what that looks like. We don't, I, I think what we'll include with the report is maybe, maybe a static version of the scorecard, or at least, or just a picture of the first page to show that's there, but it really is, you know, that, that living document that's going to, you know, change over the next five years. And then for the community, they'll have each one of your, your goal areas and the objectives, and then some narrative explaining why, you know, what, what's important about those. Dawn, did you have a comment or question?
Yes, I was wondering if the council could get a copy of the goal, or the, what is it called? The scorecard, so that we could mull around in our heads what kind of ideas we might want to input for a later meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. I could send it out, a Google Doc form, or I could also download it and sell it, send it as Excel spreadsheet. So is there thoughts on what works better? The one nice thing about Excel is that you're not creating edits on top of each other, if that works for folks. Or I can make a separate Google Doc for each one of you.
Yeah, you know, I don't, I don't see it as a, as a document that we want to put input on and give back. Dawn, are you just looking for something that you can use to, to keep track of and see, as opposed to something we can all put edits into and change?
Right, I don't want to edit it. I want to use it so that I can make my own notes and, and provide the feedback once we all sit down together to decide whether or not certain things are going to go on there.
Okay, then maybe I'll, I'll do a PDF. That'll be easier for you guys to open, then. But you could just reach out to us if you wanted a different format. Okay, well, good.
So question. Isn't all of it going on there? Isn't all of it, the, all the goals, all the objectives underneath the goals, all the measurable steps to achieve the objective? Isn't that all going on the score sheet?
Yeah, it's already actually all there, except for the inputting the data on those things, the metrics, timelines, and whatnot. So that's what Brian will update. I think what Dawn's asking is if she could just have a version, so she could have, add some of her own thoughts into it before, before meeting with Brian on it, or before he shares his.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood what we were doing.
So, and then I guess I'll, I'll say that we'll send it out, the facilitator team will send it out to you in a PDF format, so you can just see it right now blank, and do your own work, but it's not assigned homework. So you don't have to, it's just if you, if it's helpful to you to use it to do that. And we'll explain that in the email, too.
Thank you.
Okay, well, then, any others? I don't want to cut us short, unless you guys are ready to go, but I think that is really what we had to, to discuss with you for the majority of, of this time. So I think next steps are just us working on the report, and then working with Brian to set up that committee and, and helping him get through that process. So maybe another month here, maybe, maybe two, but we'll try the next month to have, have a result for you guys. So you want to get let out early, or?
Well, you have all the information that you need from us, and we have talked about everything, and there isn't any other goals, or just, you know, discussion that council would like to have around the use of the strategic plan, what could be added to it, what wasn't on it. I personally am really pleased at the way the survey came out, because I agree with you, Sarah, what that showed us is that everything that we have on there is important to the community. There wasn't anything that, like, dropped off the edge that said, oh, they don't really even care about that, and what the heck do you think you're doing? So I think that's really encouraging, and I think we have a good handle as a council on, you know, where our, where our needs are, you know, what, what it is our community is really needing. And, and that's a positive. We may not have the money to do it, but we know what the positive is, and so we can work hard for it.
I think that's a really good summary, Kathy. And I should add that there are things that came up in the survey and have come up in conversation as individual tasks. So right now, when you see the scorecard, there are going to be some blanks that say insert task here. So that will get filled out over the next month or so. And I think that's where you guys can look more clearly, identify certain projects or tasks that need to, to get done to accomplish those goals. But we didn't want to, it's just such a detailed job to, we didn't want to set a whole another couple hour meeting to take the whole council through it, when probably a lot of that stuff Brian and his staff will be able to identify.
Okay, that sounds good.
So Brian, any thoughts or anything before we wrap up here?
Just, you know, given the, the timeline, that the committee is going to have to happen sooner than later, because we really do want to fill out that task listing and, and assign the, the, kind of the thresholds. So, you know, I've got some people in mind as far as staff, but I don't want to presume with council. So I guess I would ask, at some, at some point, if council wants to determine who, what two counselors would like to participate, I'm not going to try to choose between all talented six of you, but.
In your committee?
Yes, ma'am.
In the admin committee to talk about this, to help establish priorities?
In the ad hoc committee, yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. All right, well, I'm not going to participate, so counselors, step up.
So we actually are missing a couple of counselors right now that might be interested, but I am. And I also wanted to clarify, because it did get mentioned that it was the admin committee, but then Brian said ad hoc, so I want to make sure we know, are we creating a new committee, or are we funneling this to the admin committee?
It's a city administrator ad hoc committee.
Does that make sense, Dawn? Okay, we have Dawn as the volunteer right now, and if other people aren't quite ready to commit tonight, oh, John, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I've told Brian in the past, if he says anything he needs me to help with, I have time.
Okay, good. Okay, we have a couple volunteers down, and then maybe we'll send it out via email, so the folks who weren't here tonight can respond if they want to. And then maybe try and schedule something sooner than later. May get a couple meetings on the calendar, that'd be great. We can do that by email.
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, I think we're ready to wrap up, then. So I think this will be our last online livestream public meeting around the strategic planning process. So I just want to acknowledge all the hard work that you, as counselors and staff, have put into this. It's a lot of work to do a strategic plan, but it's also such a helpful tool to have when it comes to achieving goals and, and implementing. And it's been great to be a part of it, so excited that we could help out, thanks to opportunity.
Well, you're welcome for the opportunity, Sarah. Thank you so much for all the hard work that you guys put into it.
Yeah, we've got a great team.
Yeah, this is Chief Martin. I have one question.
Yes, sir.
So it was before my time, but last time they did the strategic plan, I know each department kind of did a plan on their own that council reviewed, and then changed some, and then approved. Is that something we're looking at to do, too?
So, go ahead. So I guess what I'm asking, would ask you is, I think that, that what happened is the individual departments submitted strategic plans. submitted strategic plans, um, to the city administrator and city administrator, um, communicated those to council and helped, um, blend those, um, with what our goals were at the same time.
So this is the CA. Um, I, I think there's a, I think the, the scorecard will really drive kind of what your actions are. So I think what we need to do is, is with your assistance, we're gonna get this scorecard task list filled out. And that will kind of drive, uh, your, your strategic plan by department. So I'm not gonna make you publish anything or hand me anything. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna, together, we're gonna develop tasks as they relate to your duties. And that'll kind of, uh, give you the opportunity to provide that input on what's important from an operator perspective.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, just in case Chief Martin hadn't heard, that I think he did get tasks for being on the ad hoc committee. As well as, uh, it sounded like someone from the fire department.
Yeah, and, uh, public works as well.
Public works. Okay, good. All right. Well, thanks, everybody. We'll send you a follow-up email with, um, a, uh, a draft version of the scorecard, so without all the tasks filled out, um, that you'll be able to look at. And then I think stay tuned for, um, the ad hoc committee. And then I'm sure we'll probably, uh, you will all revisit at one of your upcoming council meetings, um, final results. And then we'll have a report to present to you, uh, probably within the next month here for the written report. And we'll see how far behind the scorecard is or if it'll be the same time. All right.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thanks so much.
See you guys tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.